Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elaria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to this flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could continue standing, please. I'd like to have a moment of silence for the tragedy in Virginia Tech and to inform everyone that Governor Strickland has instructed us to have the flags flown in half-mast. We have a moment of silence, please. Mr. Blair the Dog. Welcome to the April 19, 2007 Board of Commissioners, and in lieu of the quote for this week, we did the moment of silence.
He's so little, I don't want to step on him. Now, last week, we had a little pony. This week, we have a little male-doshened mix. He was picked up on Frankfurt in Sheffield Township. He's available for adoption today, April 19. He's a lovely little dog. Yeah, well, turn around. Oh, look what a nice little puppy he is. Oh, yeah.
You should take him home, Betty.
I can't hear that voice. Stop by our dog kennel and see what we have available. And our dog from last week has been adopted twice. We hope the second adoption will take. So come by and get a friend. Yeah, his name is Rocky.
Commissioner Kokowski is on vacation this week, so you guys are stuck with just me and Betty.
We'll try to do it.
Madam Clerk?
At 9:45 today, there will be a presentation by Ken Carney, Lorraine County Engineer and the State of Programs, under Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services Bills.
So moved.
Second, discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Investment?
So moved.
Second, discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second, discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Advances and repayments?
So moved.
Second, discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second, discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second, discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions as indicated in the summary for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordez?
I will need a brief executive session to discuss a potential new hire at Job and Family Services and workforce development. Both are subject permitted under the sunshine law. Thank you.
Approved away the reading of the same from Lorraine County Board of Commissioners meeting minutes for January 11th and February 15th, 22nd, and March 1st, 8th, 15th, 22nd, 29th, and April 5th.
So moved.
Second, discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Support the Western Reserve Land Conservancy application to Ohio Department of Agriculture's Clean Ohio Agricultural Easement Purchase Program for the purchase of an agricultural easement that will permanently preserve approximately 950 acres of the Babcock Farm located in Rochester and Huntington Township, Lorraine County, Ohio.
So moved.
I'll second Mr. Chairman. Mr. Babcock is here this morning, and also some members of the Conservancy District. I think we'd like to hear a little bit from them.
Without a doubt. Would you like to come up to the microphone, please?
I'm going to let Andy McDonald of the Western Reserve Land Conservancy say a few words. If he omits something, and then I'll add it.
Well, we'd like to see you on TV, too, Jarvis, so.
Thank you, Commissioners, for having us this morning, putting us on the agenda. We appreciate that. To give you a little bit of background, Mr. Babcock, Jarvis Babcock, has been thinking about applying to this program for the last few years, and now with the existence of the Western Reserve Land Conservancy, he has taken that opportunity to pursue the AEP program, which is a Clean Ohio fund specifically designated for agricultural easements and administered through the Department of Agriculture. We'll be submitting this application on his behalf, acting as his sponsor, and we'll have dual responsibilities with the Department of Agriculture for monitoring and stewarding that easement. We have already received resolutions of support from Huntington and Rochester Townships, and they are both looking forward to the project. This will be a pretty substantial project for the Department of Agriculture. If this gets awarded, it'll be the second-largest project in the state for being awarded for farmland preservation in one single award, and it'll be the only project in Lorraine County that has received AEP funds through this program. So it'll be a milestone for the Conservancy, a milestone for the county, as well as a milestone for the state and the Department of Agriculture to have this application go through. And we're very excited about it, and thank you. Is there any specific questions concerning the easement, or the application, or anything? The land will be available for agriculture. That's the main stipulation of the easement, is that it has to be available for agriculture under the laws currently under agriculture.
Okay, so it stays no development, stays as farmland or...
Correct, stays as farmland, or available for farmland.
You excited about it, Jarvis?
Yes, very much so.
Congratulations. Come on, come on up.
Line up, you gotta have a microphone. If I had to do it, you have to do it.
The nucleus of the farm goes back to 1831, 1832, when a couple of my great-great-grandfathers came to the Western Reserve from eastern Massachusetts. And over the years, it's been possible for somebody in each generation to consolidate that into a single ownership. My dad was the last one. There's three in my generation, eight in the next generation, 15 in the following generation with prospects for more. And this is the last best chance we have for preserving the farm as a unit in Rochester, mainly Rochester Township, although there's 100-plus acres over into Huntington Township. And we appreciate your support. There's no assurance that we'll be awarded this, but it's worth a chance. Thank you.
Very nice job, Jarvis. Good luck.
I'd like to commend you and your family, and also the Conservancy District for taking this action. I think it's absolutely wonderful.
Thank you.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under Children and Families Council, approved an entry into various contracts for the provision of community-based programs for the prevention of child abuse and/or neglect under the guidelines for our fiscal year '08 Child and Trust Fund effective July 1st, 2007 through June 30th, 2008. Blessing House is $32,000 for residential respite services. Catholic Charities, $43,342.75 for nurturing parent program and mom's support play group. And Elaria City Health Department, $14,000 for a fringe program, birth readiness, individualized development, and growth through education.
So moved.
Second, discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under Community Development Department, approved an entry into loan agreement with OWDA and Crystal Cove Condominium Owners Association in the amount of $275,000 for the construction of a coastal erosion barrier in Vermillion. Authorized appropriation of $275,000 from the Special Fund Coastal Erosion Fund, and advance $135,000 to the other expense account.
So moved.
Second, discussion.
Yes. Ron, can you give us a little explanation on this? I've never seen one of these coastal erosion barriers that we're building.
Thank you, Commissioners. I think it was in 1999 or 2000, we were approached, as were the other eight counties in Ohio that border Lake Erie, to put this erosion control program together. We are the only, and continue to be the only, county in Ohio that has utilized these funds. If I remember correctly, there are 47 property owners, both private and public, along the shores of Lake Erie in Lorraine County that are eligible to receive assistance. There's a long list of items that have to be met. The engineering has to be approved by the engineers at ODNR. The local jurisdiction has to approve the building codes prior to submission. There's a certificate on the floodplain area of Lake Erie where this is being built. They look at the shifting of the sands with the movement of the water and everything. All of those items have to be in alignment. We now have that in alignment. We have a condominium owners association that is losing, I believe it was eight-foot of shoreline a year that's needing to put this up. They have approximately half of the money that they need. They're requesting the balance, which is $275,000, and it's a 15-year fixed rate interest rate. We're trying to get it on the agenda this, end of this month, so that it can be approved by OWDA. It's a loan. OWDA will give us the money. We reimburse the contractor for doing the work, and then we, over the next 15 years, will be collecting monthly payments from the condominium association. They then, or we will then, twice annually, submit payments to OWDA, and that's how the program works. Any questions?
Yeah, where else in the county have we done this, that? You said we were the only county in the state to have done this. Where else over here?
We've done one Bender, which is on the west side of Lorraine. We've had one in Sheffield Lake, I believe, and two in Avon Lake. Those first three were private sectors, and we caught the interest rate that was, I believe, at about eight and a quarter at the time they took the loans out, but then interest dropped, prime interest dropped, and the first three were able to refinance with a commercial lender partway through. So they paid off. There was no penalty early payment. We paid back OWDA. Bender's is the one that's ongoing right now, and we're working with them, but this will be the second active one that we have.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Sure.
Nice job, Ron.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under Solid Waste Management, allocate $15,000 for a litter pickup program in cooperation with Solid Waste and Lorraine County Engineer to be paid for the planning implementation account.
So moved.
Second, discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Cordez, County Minister.
I don't have any comments or reports this morning. Thank you.
You're letting me have the Wired Grant, huh? Thank you.
I'm looking away. I wasn't sure if you were going to do that, so maybe we can have a little bit of air provided.
Okay.
Mr. Sarisson, Assistant County Prosecutor.
We have no report.
Commissioners' report.
Mr. Blair?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have received a letter from the Ohio Rail Development Commission that was sent to the Lorraine Port Authority regarding our commuter rail project, and it said that while not an official endorsement of the plan, the commission believes that the study of the West Shore Corridor proposal is in keeping with the Ohio Rail Development Commission's mission to promote rail transportation and develop passenger rail service for the benefit of our citizens. Ted's going to report on the Wired Grant. He can also expand on our trip on Monday to the Legislative Breakfast hosted by the Catholic Action Commission and the bishop, where we heard the governor speak. I'll just add that Governor Strickland reported that his campaign committee from the inaugural donated $300,000 to the Second Harvest Food Bank of monies that was left over, which I thought was a very nice gesture. At last Friday's NOAC meeting, we agreed to put in a bid to host the National Association Regional Council's conference, which will be held in May of, excuse me, in June of an ensuing year, a couple of years hence. But I was excited about that proposal because I have been to the National Association Regional Council's meetings in several different states, and they are going to make a proposal, and I think maybe the Cleveland area will be chosen, which will be nice for us, because some of the members who don't get to go to the National Association meetings from our area can in fact attend if it's in the Cleveland area. So it'll be nice. And I made all these notes the other day, and I don't know what they mean. Isn't that awful?
May help, Commissioner.
And some of it isn't in shorthand. Oh, the Alliance sent out a newsletter. Notes and news was distributed Monday of this week via email, mostly due to the efforts of my administrative assistant, Joyce Parks. On the payoffs, we have mailed these out via U.S. Postal, at a cost, of course, and she has converted all of those postal addresses to email. So that was our first newsletter since Vince Urban has taken over as administrative coordinator, and I think she is to be commended for that, even though I have conversation with her about other things, and she's not here to hear it, so maybe you'll tell her that I have something positive about her. And finally, I have agendas that I've left on the back for our Lorraine County Transportation Day, which is May 4th, Friday. It's going to be held here, and we have speakers from ODOT, including our new director, John Hart, ODOT III Director, who's formerly the Elaria City Engineer. We have NOAC Executive Director Howard Mayer, our own Ken Carney, Lorraine County Engineer, and at 10:45, there'll be a presentation by Ken Prendergast, who is affiliated with All the Board of Ohio, and the West Shore Greenway Project that I referred to in my earlier remarks. And the West Shore Corridor Stakeholders Meeting will be held at that time, all here. So we're looking forward to that. And Teresa, did you bring that atlas with you? That Ohio Coastal Atlas? We have a very, very nice, large Ohio Coastal Atlas that was distributed to all the Commissioners, and it's available for anybody who'd like to look at it. They've also sent it to the libraries. It's a very nice document. Teresa has a copy, so if you'd like to see it, see Teresa.
And as well, on number 12 on the correspondence, I did put the website where you can also access it online.
Very good. Thank you for your effort. She did a little bit of homework on that effort, and I think that concludes my report. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll start out with a very busy week. Lorraine County was selected as one of two proposals from the state of Ohio to go to the Department of Labor with the federal government, applying for a $5 million grant to work on workforce investment. The project was called Future, focusing on unique transformations, using resources effectively, the northeast Ohio area focusing on advanced manufacturing, biosciences, biomed, biotech, alternative fuel, and renewable energy. It was a nice partnership. Everyone got on board. We were able to get 11 counties participating, Community College, the WIB Board, head by Frank DiTillio from our Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Cordez, our staff. I'd like to thank Betty Sutton's office, Marcy Capper's office, Sharon Brown's office, Richfield County Commissioners I spoke to, who gave us an endorsement for the proposal, and the nine proposals that were submitted from our state. We were one of two that got submitted to the federal government. If you would like to bring it on now, Mr. Cordez, thank you.
I appreciate it. We also got Congressman Regula's office. We got Cassinage's office. Once it appeared that the freight train called Lorraine was pulling out, people started getting on board pretty quick. It became obvious that our proposal was going to be selected for northeast Ohio. There was others that were submitted, and there was a little bit of positioning going on throughout the process. And thankfully, we were able to put aside some of those issues, and at the last minute, we gained the sign-on of some of our larger partners to the east, which I think was very, very imperative, because we had to demonstrate that large regional net, the Capshoes folks. When we initially proposed, we did not have a good portion of Cuyahoga or Cleveland on board with our original proposal. When it became very apparent to them, because we basically told them that it looked that it was going our way, and we had some extensive dialogue, and we bridged some gaps. I think that last initiative, those last few days, would really push us over the edge. Although, I'm not really pleased that we've had to do all this work at night on weekends, because we usually have only two or three days to turn this massive amount of stuff around. I also have to thank Magnet that was a good partner at the table. They spent a considerable amount of time there, and I cannot begin to express a large enough appreciation to the writers at the college and to the Commissioners, because the college and the Commissioners funded the consultant that also worked with us on this proposal. So not only did we take the initiative for northeast Ohio, but you also put some money where yours were in order to bring this here. This proposal will probably leverage from the WIBs in conjunction with the $5 million, somewhere on $30 million worth of leveraged monies that we put into high-tech innovative manufacturing, and to create collaboration between government towards pursuing those goals in northeast Ohio over three years, if we're selected by DOL. Getting out of this state was step one, getting selected by DOL is step two, and you'll be hearing me discuss more with you what we need to do now at the federal level, because we can't let our proposal sit there on somebody's desk collecting dust. So we're probably going to have to put some kind of legislative priority on making our voice known in Washington, and there's no doubt in my mind that we need to make a trip.
Well, I think we need to do that, just no different than what Community College has done over the years, pressing their needs and being available and showing up and talking face-to-face with our legislators to get the projects we need done brought at home.
Exactly. So I was thinking that sometime in May, we should look at maybe coupling this with the commuter rail initiative, and taking both those initiatives at the same time and trying to do something with them. No sense going there issue by issue. We should collect a couple issues and see what we can do. We will not be successful with Y unless we continue to apply the pressure at the right points and make our position known. It would be too easy for it to go away. Now, recognizing that not every state gets a Y grant, and no state gets two Y grants, and each state was eligible to submit two. So we need to go there and convince them why our proposal's the best. I already know it's the best. We wrote it. We know what's...
Yeah, because you helped with that.
Actually, I think this is actually where the growth partnership actually came into its own here, putting this project together, where all the partners worked cooperatively to make it happen. So I mean, a growth partnership, that no wrong door method is really starting to work, I believe, and this is one of those reasons.
It is, Commissioner. You know, the collaborations that have been made in the last year and a half, two years, you start to, you know, I hate to use terms that like this, but we are at the tipping point in Lorraine County. You're starting to see all the things that are coming together, producing some outcomes. Putting all these people in the room for the amount of time that they were in the room, it used to be very, very difficult to do. Now people are really coming together very quickly because they want to be there and they want to work together, and that has to do with that network and the growth partnership and people spending a lot of time making the relationships. So I agree with you, and clearly, we're going to have something on July 17th that'll be coming out. We're going to have another unveiling of our outreach center, another collaborative effort that'll be a first, and we'll be bringing more information forward. That's going to finish the fourth leg of our stool, so to speak. We have, the college will have their presence here now, and then we'll, I'm just thinking about how, what kind of initiatives we're going to have after that, because we have a lot more to come. So yes, you're accurate on that, but we definitely need to make sure we get heard in Washington.
I would just suggest that we find out who the right people are to talk to. Who are the decision-makers in this process, so we don't waste time talking to people on the fringes or on the outside.
Well, this, we'll obviously talk to both our senators, and we will talk to all the congress persons that represent that area. And there's probably, you know, at least a half a dozen that we need to make sure that we meet with when we get there, because we know who our folks are, and we definitely got support from Betty Sutton's office, great Marcy Capper's office came gunning for us very easily. But we're not really well-known to some of our congress folks further east, and that's where our collaborations with our partners from the east will come in handy. So I think there's probably going to be a contingency, not just from Lorraine, but we'll try to pick up some partners from the east to go with us at the same time. But I'll bring you more on that.
Thank you. Also, as Commissioner Blair stated, Monday morning, we did a breakfast with the bishop and Governor Strickland, and it was very informative. I guess at the end of the meeting, the bishop and the governor were not on the same page when it came to funding for schools, but it was nice to hear the governor's platform. It was nice to hear what the diocese has plans in the future. Also, I was able to present to Jerry Zaleski, a 50-year employee of Century Town, and he's still working. He's not retiring. I assumed it was a retirement at 50 years. He decided it's his 50-year celebration. So we gave them a very nice proclamation and a very nice turnout. Think about it, how many more years would you need to get 50 here? So it was nice to be there and honor somebody 50 years, and I said, you can always come over to Personnel and the side that leaves Century Town and come work for us. Also, Mr. Billman, if I could have you up at the microphone, we'll talk about our solid waste meeting the other morning that went on for near three hours. Would you like to join us?
He's not moving very fast.
He's not moving very fast. We did have our monthly solid waste policy committee meeting. It was the second one since we started having means. We did a March meeting this year, and then an April, and we had speakers there and a small audience, but Allied did participate. Any comments on that? It seemed to go on and on and on.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Bill. David Billman.
Bill Danman.
Bill Danman, I'm sorry.
The meeting was quite long, and a lot of discussion was had about the new cart program that Allied is going to be putting out to all the communities in the county. They also discussed that, Allied discussed that if the communities don't go with the cart program, most likely, if they stay with the bag program as it is now, the cost will be greater. We also had a couple speakers come in, and one was from Akron, another one was from Cuyahoga Falls. Those people already have this cart program going, and most of them had told us that within a month, during the first month of operations, they had a lot of complaints about being able to roll the carts out, the big size of the carts and stuff. But after that, both Akron and Cuyahoga Falls said they have no more problems with that. What is going on here now is we have a plan, and it's being looked at and being made, and within that plan, we've had discussions on how to help the citizens of the county save money. And what we're suggesting or promoting is that the Allied wants to put 96-gallon carts out there all over the place, but they don't want to do the smaller ones, which should be less money. And using that smaller container, people can go out and recycle a lot more, and that's where we're coming from. We want people to recycle a lot more of their trash and not just stick it in a 96. We want them to be given a choice of a 65 or even a 48. The seniors will be much, much surprised, I think, to see how well these carts actually push. The other thing with the carts that we would say is good is that when you put the cart out there, you don't have any chance of rodents getting into it. The trash situation has been, the litter situation in Akron and Cuyahoga Falls has greatly decreased. So we had a good couple hours discussion with Akron and Cuyahoga Falls and one township official. That's about it.
Let me add, though, I think probably what came best out of that meeting was when the chairperson, Beth Barber, said they would go back to some subcommittee they have to talk about getting an educational component out, because my argument was, the public comment period on the plan they're submitting, nobody's looking at it. I mean, it's not widely available, regardless if you advertise in the paper, it's out for public. They either have to go to the website, or they have to, you know, come up here physically to look at it. I don't think that's doing a good job when you're asking for public comment. It's not available. And trying to do an educational component, and how that subcommittee's going to find a way to fund that, to send solid waste people and members of that committee out to discuss this with the residents of all the cities. Akron did a very nice job, but Mary Plaskewalk has one political subdivision, whereas solid waste policy committee's working with 34 political subdivisions. And what came out of that meeting, I think, was the one gentleman from Avon who sits on the committee, who was the gentleman there from Avon?
That's Brian.
Brian. When Brian spoke up, when he heard the rates in Lorraine versus the rates in Avon, and everyone having different pickup rates, I think that kind of caught Allied off guard, and when I discussed that we should maybe look at a county-wide rate so everyone's playing on a level ball field, and that didn't seem to go over too well, but with anybody there, it seemed like, especially with Allied. But, you know, concerns were they're asking us to support a plan as a board of commissioners when you don't have the local municipalities, villages, and townships agreeing to something. I told them, how can the board of commissioners possibly agree to a plan where all the local officials are in charge of that plan? You know, if it's approved by everyone, I'm sure the board of commissioners will go along with the other political sub... with the other political subdivisions, but for us to make that decision to support something that hasn't been out in the public, and we have no say over how the pickup's done, or how the recycling's done, or how people are being charged, I don't see any reason for the board to stand up for a kind of program like that. So, I hope they get their act together out there on educating and discussing how they're gonna make this plan move forward, so the EPA doesn't end up just submitting one for us.
Yes.
I think that's the key word. Before you go on, Dan, let's zero in on that, before the EPA submits one for us. Why don't you elaborate on that?
Well, there are some, we, for the first time in the district, we got a violation notice from the EPA because we did not have a plan together when it was supposed to be due. Now, there's been other communities, other districts, that kinda thumbed their nose at EPA. That was kinda the wrong thing to do, they came in and did their plan for them. We give out approximately $1.5 million to all the communities now with our current plan. If, in fact, EPA comes in and does the plan, if this plan does not pass, okay, this next time, EPA will come in and all the grants will be done away with. The grant that they will propose is, the more you recycle, the more you get, and in some of the districts that have EPA plan, they're getting about $35 a ton, so, as an incentive. If they do more, they get more, they do less, they might not get anything. So, the communities really have to look at this, and during the public comment period, we're looking forward to working out some bugs, and hopefully, everybody can be educated to the fact that we do have a problem if the plan doesn't pass. For anybody that would like to see the plan, we have enough copies upstairs to supply anybody that would like to look at it, they can take it home, anybody that would like to see the plan and is not able to get up here, we will send it to you. All you have to do is call our office.
Can you give the phone number?
Is it online?
Yes, it is online, yes.
That's a pretty big plan, and if you start sending that thing out, we're gonna have massive stuff going all over this county, okay?
Well, I like the fact that it's online.
It is online, yes.
How do they access that?
It'll be through the commissioner's website, and then they have to punch you into solid I don't believe we're gonna be sending that many out, Jim. We're gonna send one copy to all the cities and the townships.
Well, since we're, they should be able to go down there and make their copies down there.
Well, that's what I asked them the other day, is if they go to those political subdivisions, they can make copies for their residents or anyone who asks.
Right. But we do have copies if the cities actually want an extra copy.
Solid waste dollars and office services, Jim.
Yeah, save a tree, too.
Save a tree.
And we-
Are you printed on recycled papers? No.
Yes.
Okay.
I like your answer.
You're not gonna catch me on that one.
We're supposed to keep stuff out of the landfill.
Yes, and hopefully, our new plan will do just that with some incentives to the communities and to the residents, so, that's about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, how about some timeframes? There are some timeframes when these decisions need to be made, there's a 30-day public hearing timeframe, do you wanna give those dates?
I can't give them to you off the top of my head.
I think they held them off the other day, too, until they get all the information back out there and decide on an educational program for the communities also. Wasn't it the decision that sort of was come to the other day, and Beth was gonna organize a subcommittee, sort of bring back the subcommittee, or whatever they had?
That's gonna be on Tuesday next week, and hopefully, we'll come out of there with a direction of where we wanna do on the education component.
Commissioners, I think that probably a more effective approach would be to take out a couple newspapers ads indicating that the plan is under review and giving the website where the plan can be viewed, and making sure it's on the website in a PDF file. This way, people will get better information about it.
Well, I think what they had decided, Jim, sitting there, 'cause my argument was not educating the public or the other elected officials on actually how the plan works, that they need to do a better job of doing that before it goes anywhere in a public hearing, and what Mr. Greenberg said, our consultant, was that you can always adjust the plan or change a plan after additional public comment, it doesn't close, there's not a closing date for comment on it, it's open until the plan goes for ratification, so, I think that's what the policy committee had decided through their subcommittee, to figure out how they're going to fund and educate people on the plan they're trying to submit, right?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Also, one more question, though. Bring up here, not you, Dan, you can sit down. I need to ask somewhere with the Board of Commissioners here with some help, and I spoke to Commissioner Picasso about a couple weeks ago. My assistant represents me on the Board of Revision, they've now got over 1,200 cases and have gone to five days a week, so my office is coming to a slowdown, is there some way we can appoint another employee for a couple days a week so my assistant can continue the operations of my office? But they're looking at five days a week through the end of the year on the Board of Revision.
I wonder why.
There was only 148 last year, they're over 1,200 at this point, so can we have some discussion, Mr. Cortez, with department head or something, somebody to be available? I know Deanna Hill from our community development has sat on the Board of Revision in the past, but I don't wanna mess up another department either.
Yeah, if we pull any more resources from community development, they're gonna be limping along with no legs in this race. We've already got a couple bifurcated jobs up there that we're splitting. We need to think about bringing on some additional resources. We just, we're very thin, we're-
We're down nine positions, I know that in our offices alone, I understand it, but coming to the point with all these reviews, my office is coming to a slowdown also.
The, let me give it some thought and figure out something, best solution for you, because, you know, and I wanna say it again, you just said it, we're down nine, we're down actually now 10 positions, and, you know, we've been attritioning, we've been not feeling to attrition, you know, preparing for the winner, so to speak, that's upon us now, but it could be that we've, with my guidance, have left ourselves a little bit too thin, because we're really stretched, we're stretched so tight now, you can see through it, so.
Well, I'm just, that's all I'm asking, if I bring it up while everybody was here, I need to somehow address this situation. I know we don't, you know, hire people for Board of Revision, but I'm saying, if we have anybody in the departments that I could possibly use for a day or two a week, it would really help my office move forward with everything that Tony does while I'm being gone, running through all these other places, if we can address that. And I'd also like to thank Cuyahoga County Democrat Party on Sunday, I was invited to their yearly dinner, and they did a very nice job, Governor Strickland speaking, and Mr. Fisher, our lieutenant governor, and it was very interesting, and networking with officials from around the state, so, my report's over now.
Board of Correspondents. I'm over the reading, be wait.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Hi.
Mr. Kayla?
Hi.
Public comment? All right, I guess we're up to Ken Carney on the safety program.
Mr. Carney?
Good morning, Commissioners. As you may recall, Lorraine County has been nationally recognized for its highway safety program. I repeat that very often, I apologize, but it needs to be known, and we're quite proud of that, and the entire county is, hopefully would be also. The engineer's office is, has developed a mobile educational safety program for local youth, and the program is called the Engineer's Safety Star Workshop, and it will advocate safe pedestrian skills. And the workshop will interact with children in grades K through 4, teaching and reinforcing the basic principles of safely crossing the street in a variety of situations. The Engineer's Safety Star team will be visiting elementary schools this spring, as well as in the following school year throughout Lorraine County. To ensure the students can continually practice safety skills, our office will distribute information upon completion of the workshop for the students to take home. This information will reinforce what the students have learned in the workshop, while also encouraging the children to continue working on safety with their parents. The idea of our program originated from the SRTS, that's the Safe Route to School Program. The intent of this program is to use a comprehensive approach to make school routes safe for children to walk and bicycle. Encouraging walking and bicycling will improve children's health, reduce congestion and air pollution around schools, and teach bike and pedestrian skills. The guidelines for this program have been developed by the Safe Route to School National Partnership, a coalition of national, state, and local organizations, agencies, and businesses advancing the national safe routes to school movement. These guidelines are the most important principles behind the execution of this national safe routes to school program, established in Section 1404 of the 2005 Federal Surface Transportation Authorization Act, otherwise known as Safety Lou. This federal funding program is an important part of the larger safe routes to school movement. The Safe Route to School Program identifies the desired actions to be taken in five Es, we call it, five E categories, there are enforcement, evaluation, encouragement, engineering, and education. Our school has partnered, our office has partnered with Clearview Schools, Alaria Township, Sheffield Township, and Alaria Schools. Our program will satisfy the needs of the educational portion of that SRTS program, but it will offer to any school that would like to utilize it. So, if the SRTS funds are obtained, our program will be expanded to incorporate grades 5 through 8. So, at this time, I'd like to introduce my chief administrative assistant, Donna Spansky, who is our Safety Star Workshop Team Leader and Head of our Public Information Department. Thank you very much.
I gotta let you see my best. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you, it's always nice to be able to come in and give some positive information with everything that's happening in our world today, and our Safety Star Workshop program is one such topic. The Safe Route to School Program sparked emphasis on safety, and that's what led us into developing our safety program. The work on our program began four months ago after John Hamilton and I attended a seminar in Ashland at ODOT to educate our district and inform everybody about the criteria needed for the SRTS program. Shortly after we returned from this meeting, everybody got together and we formed a committee, and as always, the work began. From the picture, you can see that our efforts were to duplicate, I can't see over here, but our efforts were to duplicate a situation where the children would have a crossing street scenario, one with sidewalks, one without sidewalks. All of the signals in our safety workshop are remote control, they were all in-house, and the best part of this whole thing is that it's mobile. The streets, the sidewalks, the grass is, are all carpets, like the kind you use in the office, so, we're really excited about it. But anytime you have a successful program, you know that there's gotta be a team behind that. So, what I would like to do, Commissioners, is introduce my Workshop Star Team to you. Chris Bush, who is our Assistant Public Information Division, Neil Hamilton, who is our equipment operator, you have to stand up, please, Neil Dunphy, who is our safety officer, not present today, they're on vacation, the lucky dogs, is Jeff Jaeger, our traffic control superintendent, and Danielle Sheets, who's our certified teaching assistant. There are also a couple other people in the audience today who were on our original committee that helped us very much, and I'd like to mention them, Shelley Marrera, our business administrator, and Bill Holtzman, our chief deputy engineer. I'd like to thank them all for their hard work, and as you can see, we're very versified with all of our input on this workshop. Earlier, Ken mentioned that we would be sending home some information with the students, and I wanted to share with you exactly what will be going home with them. At the top, we have made a flashcard of the different signals and signs that the children will be educated with through the program, so this way, they can take them home, they can work with their parents, cut them, and use them. They also will be getting some coloring books and other coloring sheets that also relate to the program. We have a safety tip for the parents, we have safety tips for the children, we have our litter bag, and then we have other information that is provided free to our office by the Safety Council in Columbus. They also will be taking home with them a certificate of participation, so this way, they can take it home and hang it on the refrigerator, everybody likes to hang those things on the refrigerator. The school principal will also be presented with a certificate on behalf of the school, and a safety video will be distributed to each school library that is provided by the National, National, excuse me, Safety Council. But the most important thing to us, and that we're so excited about, is that we are going to present, right now, our program to 2,192 students before May 31st, so we're excited. So, we felt, and we still feel today, that our workshop is the way that Ken's office and his workshop team can give to the communities of Lorraine County, especially the children. And we invite you, any of the Commissioners and anyone, if they would like to attend any one of our workshops, we'd love to have you come. I thank you and hope to see you at one of them, and if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Donna.
No, I think it's a wonderful program, it's another quality of life issue that's being addressed, nice job, Engineer Carney. Thank you. Motion to move into executive session is outlined by our county administrator.
One second. Ms. Kayla?
Hi.
Ms. Blair?
Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alaria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend. Hey, buddy, how you doing there? Here, have a treat, okay? No one can deny the loving devotion we get from our dogs, and I think we all agree, we get back more love than we give them. I'm Dick Goddard, I'm reminding you, if you share your love with a dog, you'll never regret it. There is really nothing like a dog to spark up your life, whether you're a youngster, a senior citizen, or somewhere in between, and dogs have a whole lot of affection to share. Okay, is that good? You don't have to go far to hear heartwarming adoption stories.
With my husband is like saying man's best friend. He truly loves that dog, he feels it's part human, it's his second daughter, as Erica said, it's definitely a prize, she's queen of the house, basically. She's a good lover, she gives us a lot of attention, she's a good girl.
We had a cat before, we had Abby, and Abby adapted very well, she is best friends with that cat, she will not harm that cat in any way, she's amazing, I love her. When I'm in bed at night, Abby will jump up with me, and she will pull the covers back, and she will lay under the covers and lay her head on the pillow, just like a human.
I encourage anyone to go to the Lorraine County kennel to adopt a dog, it's given our family great satisfaction and a great reward.
After, you know, a bad day at work, or anytime you come home, it's just always nice, they kinda turn your mood around once they come, when you come in the door and they wagging their tails and jumping on you, and it's a great feeling to know that they're happy to see you and that they, they love you just as much as you love them. She is good with our other- She is good with our other dog, she's good with people, she likes attention, and she likes to cuddle up with you.
It's funny, when Lily, when you kind of discipline her sometimes, when she does something bad, or she, she always seems to roll on her back and put her paws in the air and just look up at you with a sad look, so it's kind of hard to even, even get mad at her when she does something like that, so we kind of laugh at that.
And it's always amusing when she does get a spurt of energy and want to run around, and I was like, oh my gosh, Lily's good to play now, so.
Like, I'm on the couch or whatever, and she'll hop down, and she always like tries to bite her own tail, and then that kind of like keys on our other dog, Rocky, to chime in and try to, you know, bite her tail a little bit, and then they start playing around a little bit.
One day, we came home with some food from, I just really wanted a burger, so we had a burger, and I had it sitting on the tray table by the couch, and I got up for a minute and got a drink, came back, and Lily was licking her lips, she had eaten the whole thing, and I was not very happy with her, so I screamed and told Kurt to come down and get her away from me because I was just so upset, but we both lived, and I was fine afterwards. One of the best things about adopting a dog from the kennel, at least for us, was again just giving this dog, who knows what would have happened to her, a new life, and also giving our other dog a companion during the day. It's just fun to have the two dogs and take them for walks and watch them play, and it brought us closer as well.
You know, it just makes you feel better as a person, that, you know, you're giving a dog a better chance to live a life.
Actually, I enjoy the exercise because I need to, trying to lose weight, Salem makes me get out of the house every day, and so I have to take him for a walk, even if I don't want to. And he's not that much trouble because he was pretty much housebroken when I got him from the pound. I really like the older pet because Salem was kind of, whoever had him before, they really kind of housebroken, so I didn't really have to go through the potty training deal, I just had to let him out and find a place for him to go. And I think older pets, especially for people who don't have children, are kind of good because Salem, he's real playful, but he's not, he gets tired, and he lays down, and he doesn't want to be bothered, and that's fine with me. So, he's not always wanting to play, you know, because puppies have a lot of energy. And Salem has quite a bit of energy, but sometimes he just lays on his pillow and he's like, don't bother me, I won't bother you, and sometimes when he wants to play, he wants to play, and that's okay. I got Salem at the Lorain County Dog Pound. I found him on the internet, actually, he was, they had his picture on the internet, and so I called and he was still there, and so I immediately went over and looked at him, we went outside and played, and he jumped in the car and wouldn't get out, and there we were, so we rode our way home. It was love at first sight. He's a very good companion, I can always depend on him to be here and greet me with, you know, open arms when I come in the door. He's very protective of me, and he lets me know when anyone is outside or in the driveway, so I feel safe with Salem, you know, even though he's a small dog, he's, he gives me a safe feeling just in my own home. If I'm having a bad day sometimes and I'm just not in a real good mood, you know, he'll come up and snuggle up to me, like, hey mom, it's okay. I think other people should adopt a pet, and even an older dog. The Lorain County Pound has so many wonderful dogs, all you have to do is go over there and look, I mean, even now, I still go on the website and I tell Salem, don't you want a little brother or sister? Because they all, they have all these little cute dogs over there, and they all need good homes. And if you're looking to adopt a pet, I suggest you try the Lorain County Dog Pound first. I mean, you pay for the license and just a nominal fee, and you got a great dog and a great companion, and somebody that's going to be in your life for the rest of your life, and they'll love you no matter what.
Hello, my fellow Commissioners and I are here at the Lorain County Dog Kennel on Haddaway Street, just south of Alaria City Discount Value City. We invite you to stop out and see the facility here, we have lots of dogs available for adoption. We also encourage all dog owners to register your dog each year and get a dog license, that's your dog's ticket home in case it gets lost, it has a number, and can easily be identified so that your dog can be returned to you in case he or she might take a little walk and you are unaware of it.
Along with the regular licensing that the county requires for all dogs, we also have a special dog license. It's a Special Heart Medical Care License Tag for an additional $5. And the proceeds from that go to help us when we pick up a stray that's injured, hurt, or needs extreme medical care. It helps defer the cost for us. So next time you get your dog license, please pick up the Special Heart Tag.
The Lorain County Commissioners would like to welcome you to come down to the Lorain County Dog Kennel. We also have a website that you can check out, just click on Dogs to Adopt, there's plenty of dogs to choose from, it's like this little girl right here, this is Sadie. You can come down, make sure it's a good match for you, take the dog out, take it for a walk, but please, if you're thinking about adopting a dog, come out to the Lorain County Dog Kennel and see if there's a match for you.
Give the Lorain County Dog Kennel a call or check their website for photos of currently available dogs. Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorain County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorain County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alaria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could continue standing, please, I'd like to have a moment of silence for the tragedy of Virginia Tech, and to inform everyone that Governor Strickland has instructed us to have the flags flown in half mass, we have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Mr. Chair, the dog? Welcome to the April 19th, 2007 Board of Commissioners, and in lieu of the quote for this week, we'll give the moment of silence.
He's so little, I don't want to step on him. Now, last week, we had a little pony. This week, we have a little male-doshened mix. He was picked up on Frankfurt in Sheffield Township. He's available for adoption today, April 19th. He's a lovely little dog. Yeah, well, turn around now. Oh, look what a nice little puppy he is, oh yeah.
You should take him home, Betty.
I can't hear that voice. Stop by our dog kennel and see what we have available, and our dog from last week has been adopted twice, we hope the second adoption will take. So come by and get a friend.
Commissioner Kokowski is on vacation this week, so you guys are stuck with just me and Betty.
We'll try to do it.
Madam Clerk?
At 9:45 today, there will be a presentation by Ken Carney, Lorain County Engineer on the Safety Programs, under Resolutions Number 1, Job and Family Services Bills.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Investment?
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Advances and repayments?
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions as indicated in the summary for employees within the jurisdictions of Lorain County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordes?
I will need a brief executive session to discuss potential new hire at Job and Family Services and workforce development. Both are subject permitted under the sunshine law, thank you.
Approve and waive the reading of the same from Lorain County Board of Commissioners Meeting Minutes for January 11th and February 15th, 22nd, and March 1st, 8th, 15th, 22nd, 29th, and April 5th.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Support the Western Reserve Land Conservancy application to Ohio Department of Agriculture's Clean Ohio Agricultural Easement Purchase Program for the purchase of an agricultural easement that will permanently preserve approximately 950 acres of the Babcock Farm located in Rochester and Huntington Township, Lorain County, Ohio.
So moved.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Babcock is here this morning, and also some members of the Conservancy District, I think we'd like to hear a little bit.
Without a doubt. Would you like to come up to the microphone, please?
I'm going to let Andy McDonald, the Western Reserve Land Conservancy, say a few words, if he omits something, and then I'll add it.
Well, we'd like to see you on TV too, Jarvis Sullivan.
Thank you Commissioners for having us this morning, putting us on the agenda, we appreciate that. To give you a little bit of background, the, Mr. Babcock, Jarvis Babcock, has been thinking about applying to this program for the last few years, and now with the existence of the Western Reserve Land Conservancy, he has taken that opportunity to pursue the AAPP program, which is a Clean Ohio fund for specifically designated for agricultural easements and administered through the Department of Agriculture. Will be submitting this application on his behalf, acting as his sponsor, and will have dual responsibilities with the Department of Agriculture for monitoring and stewarding that easement. We have already received resolutions of support from Huntington and Rochester Townships, and they are both looking forward to the project. This will be a pretty substantial project for the Department of Agriculture, if this gets awarded, it'll be the second largest project in the state for being awarded for farmland preservation, and one single award, and it'll be the only project in Lorain County that has received AAPP funds through this program. So it'll be a milestone for the Conservancy, a milestone for the county, as well as a milestone for the state and the Department of Agriculture to have this application go through, and we're very excited about it, and thank you. Is there any specific questions concerning the easement, or the application, or anything? The land will be available for agriculture, that's the main stipulation of the easement, is that it has to be available for agriculture, under the laws currently under agriculture.
Okay, so it stays, no development, stays as farmland or?
Correct, stays as farmland, or available for farmland.
You excited about it Jarvis?
Yes, very much so.
Congratulations. Come on, come on up.
Come on up, you gotta have a microphone. If I have to do it, you have to do it.
The nucleus of the farm goes back to 1831, 1832, when a couple of my great-great-grandfathers came to the Western Reserve from eastern Massachusetts. And over the years, it's been possible for somebody in each generation to consolidate that into a single ownership. My dad was the last one. There's three in my generation, eight in the next generation, 15 in the following generation with prospects for more, and this is the last best chance we have for preserving the farm as a unit in Rochester, mainly Rochester Township, although there's 100-plus acres over into Huntington Township, and we appreciate your support. There's no assurance that we'll be awarded this, but it's worth the chance, thank you.
Very nice job Jarvis, good luck.
Thank you.
I'd like to commend you and your family, and also the Conservancy District for taking this action, I think it's absolutely wonderful.
Thank you.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under Children and Families Council, approve and enter into various contracts for the provision of community-based programs for the prevention of child abuse and or neglect under the guidelines for fiscal year '08 Children's Trust Fund, effective July 1st, 2007 through June 30th, 2008. Blessing House is $32,000 for residential respite services. Catholic Charities $43,342.75 for nurturing parent program and mom's support play group. And Alaria City Health Department $14,000 for a bridge program, birth readiness, individualized development, and growth through education.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under Community Development Department, approve and enter into loan agreement with OWDA and Crystal Cove condominium owners.